All right, welcome and let's call the September 18th Board Meeting to order. Mrs. Callen had to be out of town. If you'll please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Any, do any Board members have agenda items for modification? Good, good. My President's Report is short. I want to thank Mrs. Callen for handling the last meeting for me, but she's not here to thank. One thing that, that she represented us for last week, I believe, was the Hillcrest Turf Dedication and the final new turf to be dedicated is at Glendale this Thursday night. So, any and all Board members and staff and community are welcome. I'll be there to represent the district. Dr. Ritter, your report.
Yeah, I'd like to introduce, I did already, but to the group, the Internal Auditor, Mr. Mueller, if you'd come on up. This is Wayland Mueller. And if you could just give us a little bit of your background. He started, Wayland started the 10th on a Monday. So, why don't you just talk to us, visit with us a little bit about your background.
Okay. Oh, thank you for the introduction, Dr. Ritter. Do like to say I do appreciate the opportunity to serve as the district's internal auditor. As far as my background goes, for the past eight years, I've served as an external auditor. And the firm I worked at, we specialized in governmental audits and I did perform audits of many school districts throughout the state. Prior to that, I did have a little over a year of work experience here at Springfield Public Schools, working as a budget analyst. So, I am looking forward to reestablishing the internal audit function here at the district and working with the Board and the district leadership to establish priorities for my job going, going forward. Great. Thank you.
Thank you, welcome.
Just to help everybody understand, he's looking at the state audit and he's also looking at opportunities to start investigating, not really investigating, but helping us with the cash flow at sites and things like that. So, and that's all part of the state audit. Eventually, though, he is going to have a conversation with us as far as putting together a plan and, and then that will eventually come to the Board. So, anyway, we're looking forward to Wayland's work. Also, I'd like to mention, first of all, I know we congratulated the chamber as far as their, their award, but what I'd like to say at this time is that it's starting to ring across the state of Missouri, but also across the nation. Most any place you go and you mention the chamber, everybody seems to be aware that they won this award. So, I think it's something we need to pay attention to. Also, I want to make a special recognition and congratulations to the Springfield Cardinals for winning their, I don't know what you call that, is a league championship, league championship, not, not World Series, but the league championship. And I think that's a great thing. I also, the last thing I want to mention is that starting early was a good experience for us. And it's almost like the students didn't miss a beat. And what's really interesting is, is we're right, right at about a month already. It's hard to believe. We're already into the school year by a month and visiting some of the sites, it's amazing, amazing how the sites, principals, teachers, really are getting a good handle on the data around their students and they're, they're on track and attendance has been good as far as the test, the Performance Series Test, the first test, they're able to get that data already and it's impacted their instruction. So, we have a lot of good and exciting things going on in our classrooms. So, I just wanted to mention that. So, that's all I have at this time.
Great, thank you. We have public comments tonight and for our speakers, we have two different types of public comments. One is when we address items on the agenda and one of you is speaking to that and the other is when we have general public comments and I think one of you is addressing that. Remember that we welcome comments from the audience, that it's inappropriate to address the Board about students or individual staff members by name in open meeting and if you have concerns about these individuals, those concerns should be addressed through the appropriate administrative supervisors. And we have five minutes for public comments on the agenda and I think Mr. Jason Wyatt, is that correct, to address the Robertson School property buyout. Welcome.
My name is Jason Wyatt. I'm a previous tenant or actual resident of one of the homes that was purchased by the school board for the Robertson buyout. Excuse me. My family has lived there for 27 years, had lived there for 27 years since August '85. I guess one of the main concerns that I've read in some of the media is that the school is over capacity by 130 percent. And by some of the media that I've read on this, to do, I guess with the property that was purchased, is to improve parking, improve traffic flow, more green space. I also heard of an adult learning center, mental health service building also proposed to be built there. Not exactly for sure how that kind of helps the school with overcrowding. And, you know, I, I don't know if I'm really allowed to ask questions, specific questions or not, or if I'm just kind of allowed to make statements or whatever.
You can, you can make statements and if you do have questions, our administrative staff will get back to you on that.
Okay, well, I do have questions. And I mean, those are just, were, some of my concerns right there is from what I read in the media, you know, about the school being overcrowded and that being the main issue. But what to do with the property, from what I've heard, it's still undecided, but from some of the things that I've read, none of them have anything to do with overcrowding of the school. So, that's just kind of all that I have to say, really. Well, I guess another statement that I'd like to make, on the same day that my father was diagnosed with cancer, was the day that he come home to find the eviction notice in the mail from the landlady stating that we had 30 days to vacate the premises. That was all the notice that we was given. I understand that's kind of comes from the landladies, from her, you know, her choice or whatever. She informed me that she didn't want to sell to the school systems. What exactly happened on why she sold, I don't know. That kind of remains unresolved right, right there. But just to let you guys know, it kind of caused a lot of grief, a lot of heartache and there's kind of a lot of problems from the family to, to have to go through this. So, thank you.
Thanks for your comments. We have one information item this evening. Mr. Chodas has the 2011-2012 financials.
If you'll look at Attachment A, and actually, I, I don't have that because I think the numbers would be too small on the screen, but what they show is that we anticipate ending the year with right at $31.5 million in operating funds. The operating fund balance reserve percentage increases from 14.86 percent to 15.64 percent. This is, I, I think I mentioned last Board meeting, within a few thousand dollars of, of the initial projection. These are unaudited numbers. We do not anticipate that there will be any changes to this, but surprises do occasionally happen. One thing I, or a couple of things I would like to point out, if you look at the reserve percentage at the start of the 11-12 year, in the column that says DESI Fund Balance Percentage, as I've pointed out to the Board a number of times, DESI does a different calculation than we do for the reserve percentage. So, that DESI had us at a beginning fund balance percentage of 11.12 percent. We will end the year at 12.21 percent. If you look at the bottom left-hand corner of your sheet, you'll see a list of school districts. I believe there's about 30 school districts listed. It includes all the large districts and our cohort. It's sorted in reserve percentage order and it's using the DESI formula because I can't get at the, the information, the way we calculate it. So, I have to use the DESI percentage and as you'll see, we are the second lowest reserve percentage. The only one lower than us is St. Louis and they're negative. Another piece of information I thought the Board would be interested in is the cost per student. What I did was I took all the school districts that have an enrollment of more than $8,000 or 8,000 students and I ranked them. This is straight off the DESI website and we are the lowest here, which means that we spend the less, the least amount per student of any of those school districts. And the External Auditor will be presenting the final audit report in November, November. Any questions?
This will probably generate some comments. Mr. Hosmer.
Question about the fund balance. And I think it's certainly appropriate as an information item. I, I do want to point out, though, that this Board has had a discussion about fund balances and, and taken at least a position by acclamation that, you know, we're not looking to up our fund balance so that we're in the ballpark with Rolla, Branson and Ozark. That there's a understanding from this Board that, that we have an obligation to, to spend our money wisely, but spend it so that we educate our students.
Right, and in, in fact, the 12-13 budget does reduce the fund balance by a million dollars.
So, I, well, again, while I think it's important to, to put this in context, certainly not something that I'm looking at thinking, well, we've got to jump up our fund balance because we want to keep up with the Joneses. The second thing, the expenditures per student, I guess, again, I, I appreciate the information item. I don't know if this is their, what, what the administration takes from this, if anything. That we're, we're doing great and not spending much money, that we need to spend more, or here's a nice graph for you.
Well, I'd say the first, the first two. You know, I, I think we are doing more with less money than other districts are.
Other comments? I think the numbers sort of speak for themselves. I think this sort of shows we're lean and mean and that, that we as a Board made some hard decisions that some of us, most of us didn't like to have to make, but we made and our taxpayers should be appreciative of, of the fact that we are doing more with less and our state legislature should be appreciative of that fact and, and be looking at this as they, as they work things out with the formula and all that. So, great, thank you very much.
I'm sorry, I've, I've got one more question about this.
Okay, well, let you have another.
Thank you. The expenditure, is there any way to, I'm sure there is, but to further break that out to kind of see percentages and expenditures per student? For example, how we compare with these same districts, either in administrative or in teacher salary or, so kind of where the, I guess I'd like to get a sense of where the discrepancy lies in these, in these numbers. I mean, obviously, some of it you can understand from bigger cities and just the cost of labor and et cetera, but, but is there a way to do that?
Yes, there is. We can, we can do that. Would it be okay if we presented that when the Auditor presents the, the final numbers?
That'd be fun. I just like to, I think it'd give, it provides some information to me that I'd like to see, I guess.
And is that all on the DESI website, too?
It is. You just have to sift through it.
We'll let you do that. Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You'll recall that at the last meeting, we approved the additional FTEs and approved the real estate purchase at Robertson School. We have three items for separate consideration tonight. 9.01 is a resolution on Proposition B. Dr. Ritter.
This is the resolution related to tax, the tax, credit, I mean, the tax, tobacco tax initiative and basically, it's a resolution that you saw. And I know Dr. Frederick has some questions and I know Mr. Lee has some answers for those questions related to whether the funds generated from this tax is going to be kept in a separate fund and yes, it's going to be kept in a, in a trust. Does it assure that it's going, not going to be taken, equal amounts not going to be taken from the general fund as far as money going into schools? It says it, but you never, ever, ever have that assurance. And then I believe the other question you had is who's going to be in charge of, yeah, who's going to be a trustee? And I believe, I believe that's spelled out as well, to be a Board and with membership tied to the Board with some, with sunset positions each of those memberships. I, I do feel that, and I recommend that the Board support this resolution. This is coming ready, almost word for word from MSBA. So, any questions, any thoughts?
Certainly supportive of it and would recommend that the, that the Board does approve the resolution to support. I, I know there's a lot of discussion about it from the tax standpoint, but there's also a lot of support across the state concerning this. Hopefully, they've tied the ballot language much, much tighter than we saw in the lottery money so that some of the same thing doesn't happen where lottery money comes in one side, general fund money comes out the other side with respect to the, the trust fund, which is set up so that legislators cannot get a hold of it. They can't get to it. Now, what they do with general appropriations, I don't know, but the ballot language does say this is supposed to be new and additional money to DESI, higher ed and obviously tobacco cessation, which there is none. So, this will be all new money for that. So, but it does go to the, the trust fund, which is managed by a nine-member Board that's appointed by the Governor, which I think it's balanced partisanship for appointees is my understanding to do that. So, I know one of the questions that came up was with, and I don't have an answer for this one, with respect to administration of the trust fund and how much of, of each dollar goes, if they get a dollar, how much of it goes straight to the school? And I haven't got that answer yet. I don't, don't think it's going to be much, but I don't have the exact answer of what that would be. I'm sure there's some administration cost that goes with it.
So, if I'm understanding it, there's no financial discretion to this money to the legislature?
50 percent goes to higher ed, 30 percent goes to, I'm sorry, 50 percent goes to public ed, K-12, 30 percent goes to higher ed, 20 percent goes to cessation. That is tobacco cessation. That's in the ballot language. So, that can't go anywhere else. It goes straight to DESI. As, as the money accumulates in the trust fund, it is allocated, it, as it goes in the general foundation formula to be allocated to schools through the formula. And then, once the formula, who knows when, gets fully funded, then it will be distributed through a per-people basis based on the number of students you have in your school. So, everybody gets the same amount at that point.
Based on the form?
Based on, not after it's fully funded.
Oh, no, yeah.
It's based on the number of students you got.
Okay.
So, you know, nothing's guaranteed ever, but this is probably the best that we've seen with respect to this.
Well, I know in the past, we'd had discussions before they went into session with our legislators and I can think of three, just immediate, when this subject was approached, that it was an absolute no consideration that they would even bring forth as legislation. So, they really, other than a personal opinion, they wouldn't be, they wouldn't weigh into this proposition necessarily, the, the individual legislators.
As far as the money, what's the monies? Yeah, they, no, that doesn't make any, no, they can't touch it.
Can't touch it. Thank you.
Other questions? I would take a motion that the Board of Education adopt the attached resolution, authorize me and Dr. Ritter to indicate support for Proposition B on the November 2012 ballot. Mr. Luke.
Second.
Thank you very much. Mr. McKenna, medical stop-loss coverage.
Good evening. This action item is a item that we bring to you annually, always in the second meeting in September. It's the renewal of the district's stop-loss coverage and some of you will, may recall that that coverage is intended to reinsure the district's health plan in the event that a single claimant has a large claim or a series of large claims in any one year and in the event that the plan itself has a particularly large claim expenditure in a year. The district markets this coverage annually through our benefits consultant, Gallagher Benefits Services. This year, we did that and many companies responded that they were not able to provide a competitive quote, meaning that the district's current premium is, is already pretty competitive for the claims experience that we have. However, our incumbent carrier, H&amp;M Insurers, which the district has been with since October of 2010, did provide several different arrangements for coverage and we have a recommendation tonight for one of those arrangements offered by H&amp;M. The district's current premium or in the previous plan year has been $607,000, which includes a $250,000 specific deductible and a $125,000 aggregating specific. Under the proposed arrangement with H&amp;M, that deductible would change from $250,000 to $275,000 and the aggregating specific limit would also remain and the premium would increase from 607 to $687,000, which is just about a 13 percent increase. Our recommendation tonight is that we renew the coverage with, with H&amp;M effective October 1. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Question. I would take a motion that we adopt the recommendation of administration, approve the contract authorizing H&amp;M insurers to act as our carrier for medical stop-loss coverage effective October 1. Mrs. Frederick.
Second.
Mr. Lee.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McKenna. And Mr. Chodas, the Treasurer's Report.
Thank you. If you'll open up the document, I believe the second page is the financial statement. As always, the first thing I look at when I look at the financial statement is to make sure that the percentage of budget for the total revenue is hopefully higher than the percentage of year-end for last year and it is. And conversely, hopefully, the percentage of budget for the total expenditures is lower than last year and it is. There are a couple of line items in the expenditures by function, the, the bottom half, that are negative for the month of August. Once again, that's because of accrual reversals. I believe that's all flushed out in August, so starting September, we should get numbers without accruals impacting them. The sales tax collections for August were down 205,000. Fortunately, we were up prior to that, so year-to-date, we're up $125,000. The property tax collections were essentially even with last year's collections and fiscal year-to-date, we're up 39,000. We did look at the property tax for the current month, which we can do once we, once we're after the 10th, that's usually when we get the information. And it was a nice month. We're up 400,000 in the operating revenue for property taxes for September. I'll be glad to answer any questions the Board may have at this time.
Take a motion to approve the Treasurer's Report.
Mr. Luke.
Mrs. Twitty.
Second.
Mr. Renner, thank you.
Thank you.
Several routine action items that are listed on your agenda and we can approve those as submitted at all at once with the motion.
I'll move.
Mr. Lee.
Second.
Mrs. Twitty, to approve the routine action items as listed. Thank you. And then we have several general consent items, minutes and personnel issues that we may approve with a motion.
Mr. Renner.
Second.
Great, thank you very much. Public comments to address non-agenda items. We have one speaker. Again, the same ground rules apply and, and you'll have three minutes to address the Board and that would be Mr. Kelly Atkinson. Thank you.
Mr. Kelly Atkinson. In '95 or '96, there was a student taken out down there in Ozark, mentally handicapped kid. He was shot. There was over 20 other students that knew about this before it happened. 20 other kids know about it, they're talking. If the parents and teachers and principals and stuff had been listening, that kid wouldn't September 12th, my son, no, I'll take it back, September 11th, my son had a knife pulled out, pulled on him after school. September 12th, he went in, asked the teacher if he could go to, go to the office. She, he, they, he was told no. Said, "Sit down." He asked repeatedly, so he started acting up, eating Pop-Tarts in class, putting his headphones on. Even wrote a note, there was two teachers in there, by the way, even wrote a note to the teachers explaining why he needed to go to the office, needed to talk to the police. They said no. Finally, he got mad enough that he cussed. He said, "God damn it, let me go to the office." They sent him, wrote him up for it. When a student's life, feels like his life is in jeopardy, there's a problem. When a teacher ignores him, there's a bigger problem. I'd like for y'all to look into this. I'd like these teachers written up.
Thanks for your comments. And if you talked to the, we'll get you the information to talk to the principal at that school.
Well, I did talk to the principal. Actually, I was there when he went to the office and thought it was resolved as far as the discipline on my son went because he was trying to get in trouble to go to the office to talk to the police. And they still wrote him up. When the assistant principal called me and told me he was writing him up, I got laughed at.
Mr. Atkinson, I'd be glad to visit with you after the meeting. I'm, I'm the next in line, be the person for you to talk to next in line, okay?
Thank you.
And feel free to finish your comments, but I'd be glad to, to visit with you after the meeting, okay?
That's all I've got to say.
Great, thanks for your comments. Comments from the Board, Legislative Report. Do we have anything to discuss legislatively?
I think as far as legislation.
The veto session, nothing's going to affect us, I don't think.
So, I don't think so. I think while legislatively, the chambers already started to put together their priorities as far as education. I basically told them I didn't anticipate a whole lot of change other than tax credit and I believe we are concerned about the tax credits and also the tobacco tax. And so, we, I told them we would probably be putting some
And so we, I told them we would probably be putting some language together with the resolution tonight with the tobacco tax. So that, they're getting aggressive, wanting to take action on that pretty quick here, the chamber does, so we'll do that. But we usually don't take action on that as a board as far as priorities until later. Now, we do, Kathy and I have been working to try to set up a, what do we call that? An opportunity for us to come together with legislators and the board, and there are quite a few on the ballot that are questionable, so we, we will probably send invitations to everybody.
Great.
That's running, and we are targeting, what date is that?
November fifteenth.
November fifteenth, okay, which is a Thursday. That's the next day. I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't have much choice. That was the only day we could take. Anyway, it's in the afternoon. I don't know if we set a time in or not. Anyway, we're looking forward to, and there's going to be quite a few new faces, different faces, and so I think it's a wonderful opportunity for us to meet them and to have a conversation around education on that. So that's six weeks away.
Yeah.
So, other than that, we have a couple more opportunities to say vote, but vote we will. Anything else?
No, it's, everybody's putting priorities together, their positions now, so just waiting for the election, see what happens.
All right. Any future issues?
We got a lot of future issues.
Yes.
We have tons of them. Pre-year information, the Jefferson City Public Schools, along with MSBA, Carter Ward, as well as, is M.A.S.A. coming? I don't think so. Anyway, we have a team coming up, four to five people coming up to visit with us about continuous improvement, and they're trying to get a sense of the deployment of that and what it looks like. And so we're going to meet with them this Thursday, and so if you want to come and greet you can. Then the following Friday, in the morning, we're going to have a presentation that's just basically Baldridge one oh one. And Saturday morning, we're going to have a presentation that's going to talk about our DNA, and it's going to talk about, as well, that we're looking forward to having a conversation around what the classroom looks like, what our typical classroom looks like. And so we're going to have a conversation around that, and that's going to be Saturday morning. The primary audience for both of these, we think, will be school board members, some superintendents, but primarily school board members. Then on the fourteenth of November, we are also going to give a presentation, and that will be to those that are pretty focused and want to deploy, and that'll be in Columbia, and that'll be in the afternoon of the fourteenth. So if you want to spend two days on the fourteenth and then come back on the fifteenth, you're more than welcome to do that. So those are future items that are coming up.
I follow up on it, just give you some context of while this is going on. MSBA has become, is in Baldridge organization as of the first of the year, and so we're in the process of rolling out Baldridge Continuous Improvement with districts in the state of Missouri. And so that, a lot of this, and obviously, that's what we do very, very well, and so we've been kind of put on the forefront to help, how do we get this deployed in the state of Missouri to districts that are interested in using Baldridge as a way to improve their district? And so that, that's sort of the context of why they're kind of keeping Springfield busy in some of the presentations and some of the conferences coming up, as to how it's been done and how it's been very effective in changing the culture of our district, so that, just some background on that. Following up on the MSBA conference next week, most of you already know, Central High School Choir is going to be performing.
Oh, that's right.
At the opening session with the National Anthem, and so that will be pretty exciting to see those kids there doing that, so that would be good. And we have three other presentations that we're doing for the session, so those of you that are there and even, I know some of you are participating in them and making the presentation, so certainly appreciate you doing that.
Mr. Hosmer, you know which one you're presenting?
Somebody's telling me something, so.
Yep. Find out that morning.
And Mr. Renner, you know which it is. Okay.
Well, I'm going to thank everybody who's put together presentations and who'll be presenting. I think it's a good showcase for our district, so thanks to everybody.
We will be recognizing outstanding public school graduates, and this particular year, we're recognizing Neil Boyd, if you know who Neil Boyd is, but he's America's Got Talent winner of two thousand and eight. He's a Sykesville graduate, and he's also running for state rep down in southeast Missouri, and he sang at the Republican National Convention, sang, performed at that particular thing. So he's, he's getting some airtime, and, but really unique individual and great graduate of public education, so we're going to recognize him and let him speak and perform while he's there, so that'll be kind of exciting, too.
We did invite his teacher.
Teachers.
Appropriately.
His favorite teachers.
William Gregor and Debbie Gregor, so.
Good.
Okay.
Any other future issues? Looking forward to October, just let me mention October eighteenth. Two things happen on October eighteenth. Number one, the third class for the Springfield Public Schools Hall of Fame will be inducted. Three great honorees that I think are announced fairly soon in one of the magazines.
October first.
October first.
They're the best we've had.
Yeah, I'm pretty impressed.
I'm always going to say that, but this time the.
It's a good group. So October eighteenth, that'll be a lunch function. October eighteenth in the, I don't know what time, but that's our, going to be our Fall Board Retreat, and I'll be putting the agenda together very quickly with Norman and Chris, and any input from you all, and we're going to talk, Bruce, about some more about some of those things, so. And the, and one thing we want to address is board governance, so we'll be talking about that. Any other items for discussion, please get those to me for October eighteenth.
We don't know the time yet, or we haven't set a time?
I think we did.
We probably do.
I have it at four thirty.
I have four thirty in my calendar, but I didn't know if it.
Yeah, four thirty to eight.
Four thirty, okay.
We'll, let's say four thirty to seven thirty. We'll get you optimism.
Now, we'll go eight, and then if we.
There you go.
Let her.
All right. Any other issues tonight?
Just want to recognize a couple, oh, I'm sorry.
I, it's not an issue, but, but a comment, and I, with, with all of us watching the national news that's focused in on the Chicago schools, it makes, I hope all of us have a huge appreciation for the teachers that we have and the way that they conduct themselves and, and that we are, we are so, so fortunate, and I, you know, it's a chance to say thank you because we are observing other places and how business is conducted, and, and I just think that that ought to be recognized.
Absolutely.
That's what I was, anyway, I do have one other thing.
Okay.
We have some people in the audience. We have a young man from Branson who teaches in Branson, and he's part of a education specialist program, and I want to welcome you and appreciate you making the trip just to come up and watch some good stuff going on, huh? Oh, 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 we appreciate your taxes.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay. But anyway, I believe that was, yeah, okay.
Great. Thank you. Your financial operations report is enclosed on board docs. Please do your plus deltas. We do need to vote to go into executive session tonight to discuss real estate and personnel matters as provided in Section five, ten, oh, twenty-one, two, three, and thirteen RSMO, and I'll take a motion for that.
So move.
Mrs. Twitty?
Second.
Mr. Renner. Thank you very much. We adjourn to executive.